This is the Selectmen's meeting, July 23rd, 2012. First order of the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to review the minutes of the 16th of July.
Motion to approve with correction.
Second. And we'll start with your corrections, Selectmen DeVanzo.
Just give me one second, I highlighted in yellow.
Page one, announcements, it has a typo, so.
Oh, I need to eat in announcements.
Yeah.
It's gone. But there's a good.
How far in you going, Phil?
I don't know. I got a yellow highlighter in there.
Oh, okay.
Someplace. Lot of pages.
There you go.
Page eighteen.
Page eighteen.
That's right. And I just thought that maybe it had something to do, because it was on page eighteen, if you go to the...
Eighteen, come on.
The what?
Nothing.
No, seriously, if you go to second paragraph, under planning, the first sentence, the last thing at the right-hand side is eighteen, that should be sixteen feet, eight inches, not sixteen feet, eighteen inches.
Okay.
Yes. Remove the one.
Sixteen feet, eighteen inches would be seventeen feet, two inches.
So where's the correction? The correction is eighteen is eight.
Sixteen feet, eight inches.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I just thought that maybe your self-corrector had something on there that made it eighteen because it was page eighteen, that's all.
Is by six?
Just a comment.
By six feet is okay?
Sixteen feet, eight inches, by six feet.
Okay, alright.
Right, the height.
Do you have any other?
Yes. On the fourth paragraph, third sentence, third, third line from the bottom, T-H-E-I-R should be T-H-E-R-E.
I wonder what shorthand for DeVanzo?
I don't know, because I don't do it.
We'd have to ask Marie Boyle.
DA.
Yep, DA.
Does anyone have any other corrections?
Negative.
Dead on arrival.
Oh. A call for a vote. If you approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Announcements. Who has the?
We won't be meeting next week, that's an announcement.
It is an announcement.
No, Selectmen's meeting on following Monday.
Do have a DPW update.
The reason is there's a number of us on vacation.
Okay, I think we better...
We would not have a corner.
And that's the 30th?
That's correct.
I can put off, down on the bottom, 6pm, I can put off.
Sue, the one announcement that's pre-printed, that's it, just the sentence?
Yes, and I think Selectman Adams has an announcement on a project update.
Thank you.
If you'd like.
Alrighty.
Let's see, the master drainage and sidewalk project is winding down and nearing completion. Sidewalks have been top coated and the driveway aprons are prepped and all installed. ADA ramps were installed. Crews are now working on the punchless item like general cleanup, loming and seeding, installation of signage and mailboxes, those sorts of minor details. The completing pavement cores as needed on the mainline sewer trench. When the road is milled down as part of the paving project, they want to ensure there's enough pavement mix underneath the new overlay that will be installed in certain areas. With representatives from Brock's Paving to discuss the overall paving project and process, DPW meet again with Brock's to lay out and paint the road. DPW's request of a schedule from Brock's Paving, and we'll share that information with the various folks around town as soon as available. They want to make sure that people are, there's several steps involved in paving the road, it's not as simple as one might think. The first step is milling, that includes grinding down areas to match, to maintain a certain curb reveal, that's the amount of curb that shows above the pavement. Then it goes on to shimming, which is a thin layer pavement to help remove the little irregularities, and reestablish the crown in the road so you get proper drainage. There would be some temporary striping, and then they have to go through and adjust all of the structures, the drain manholes and catch basins, to make sure that they're raised to an elevation to match the new pavement once it's put on. There's some 200 of those structures, so that's going to take some effort. They'll be installing new traffic loops, those are the electronic loop signals that tie into the traffic controllers for the traffic lights. Then they'll do the final overlay, which is an inch and a quarter of final pavement with the final striping. Should be done in a month or a month and a half.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. I have just a short announcement. Mr. Ray Lord, South Mass Street, called the Town Hall this week, thanking DPW employees, specifically Mike Hillhouse and then the town engineer, Megan Theriot, and highway engineer Jeff Surratt, for being so responsive during the construction around his house. That's it. Any other announcements? Next item's public comment, there are no persons from the public here. We'll move on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule includes Wednesday, July 25th, Budget Committee, and Thursday, August 2nd, CIP. That's the two weeks, because we're not meeting next week.
I, I just got that email myself on Friday, I cannot, I responded to you, so I can't make that meeting, I'm not here.
Which one?
It's a Budget Committee meeting solely for the purpose of the Grassmere Water Precinct to sign their DRA forms.
When does that mean?
Wednesday, this Wednesday, at seven o'clock.
This Wednesday, at seven.
So it's a short meeting just for the approval of the Grassmere budget?
So that's the only thing, that's the only reason it's there for, yeah.
I could, I could stand in for you if you'd like.
Who did we appoint?
David first. Well, I'm, I'm number one. Wednesday's evening's good for me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, though. Or do we have one, a contin- do we have a standing?
Continency set up?
In case, for some reason, he can't.
I'm, I'm standing as well.
He's gonna be there Wednesday.
I know that, but in, in the event that something were to come up, did we have, we had some long standing?
There's a standing motion, I'm the alternate.
No, that, in case you couldn't make it, it was somebody else.
There was a secondary. Okay.
Attending CIP. Mark?
Me.
Consensus folder tonight includes an accounts payable manifest for $365,794.36, which by the way includes 50% of the cost of the mill foil. When Mr. Pillot returned the contract, he requested instead of one lump sum payment, to do 50 and 50, and he did give me a report of what he's done to date, and he's been very active, and I've got the number of pounds of mill foil he's removed and disposed of, so that, Warren, includes that. Also payroll withholding manifest, which is $144,265.92, and a right to inter for Carbono Shirley Hills Cemetery, Section 3, Lot 79.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion to approve the consensus folder, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. For assesses recommendations tonight, you have land use change tax lien releases on map nine, lots four, seventy-one, and sixty dash four, Veterans Tax Credits, map five, lot 24A dash four, reported timber cut for 2011, map nine, lot sixty dash OS, and intent of timber cut on map 10, lot 28 dash four.
Motion to approve, second. Okay. Motion to approve the assesses recommendations, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you. At tab E in your packets, you have a memo from Planner Brian Rose requesting the release of $59,536.26, oh, 20 cents, I'm sorry, of which $19,535.80 will be used immediately to pay submitted invoices, and the remainder to be encumbered to meet the remaining invoices on the rail trail project. Motion is needed from the board on that.
One, one point first, the, in the second paragraph, the first line where it reads nine thousand and something, nine thousand. Don Bora corrected that amount this morning. Let me read the corrected amount to you, it's $6,892.27. And the reason for that is the third page following, where you see in the middle of that page, a list of four vouchers, three of them are VHB, 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 and then one called Boat Equipment Company. The Boat Equipment Company is not for the Transportation Enhancement Grant. Reimbursement for that voucher is being done under a different grant.
Oh, okay.
And so the nine thousand...
But we still want to, a vote to distribute the total 59,000.
So that, that number does nothing to change the amount that's on the motion.
Just allocated to, differently.
It'll be different line.
So move.
So the motion is to release of $59,536.20. Thank you.
I have a motion.
Second.
Do we need discussions?
Yeah, just one. This, the, the Parks and Rec Impact Fees were the 20% match of the TE grant.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So is it safe to say that if we do not spend the TE grant, let's say we spend $80,000 less than, than the TE grant, then I would assume that correspondingly, we would own, that we would not use these impact fees accordingly?
Yes.
So that we would then return it back to Parks and Rec?
If we do the proper bookkeeping, if the overall project is less than...
I just wanted to make that clear.
Much total budget.
Okay.
The, would be up to the park commission, if they could recommend either what to do with the unused amount of money that came from the impact fee fund. They've already discussed the fact that if there is money to be returned from the 79,000, that they could allocate that for future matches of a rail trail grant, because that was the intent of the, the match in the first place.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to release the remainder of the impact fee into a special account. Those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. As you're aware, there's a sewer project going on in Temple and Reed, and this work required taking down the guardrail in the municipal parking lot. The Highway Utility Superintendent requested authorization to reposition the guardrail to within 20 feet of Temple Court. This will allow for more parking in the village area. It was pointed out that the GIS map may not necessarily reflect the actual boundaries, so we had Assessor Bartlett look at the deeds, and he researched the deeds, clarified the bounds, and you have his report in your packet at tab 4F. It appears that the deed bounds, like I said, do not correspond with GIS. A survey will be needed, though, to verify those bounds. There's no money in the budget to survey this year, does the board wish to budget this for next year? And what we would be surveying is just the town lines, not the private property.
How much is the survey, roughly?
Roughly about 4,000.
And if we don't do the survey, then what? Then we can't proceed with any of that stuff?
Well, I think what's in question is the boundaries with those private individuals, but it's clear that we own all the way through, so if he just repositioned that guardrail further down, I don't see any issue. What's in question, though, is to the left, if you're headed down that, towards the new parking. Yes.
Scott, this, in the, hand out this exhibit here, which has a red square.
Yeah.
That, the red square is town land, end of the parking lot.
I hear you.
And that it's town property, and you can see how, you can see how the, the boundary line now encompasses a shed and what used to be a swimming pool, the swimming pool is no longer there.
Right.
So eventually, if the survey that could be done next year proves that this red square does exist and is town land, then we have a second issue of what, what to do with the infrastructure that's been built on town land. That's a, another question. It could be resolved as part of the survey, if the board at that time wanted to have the surveyor put in some other boundary markers or subdivision of that parcel. Doesn't have to be decided tonight, it's just the, I think you, what you're indicating tonight, Sue, is just that when we go into budget deliberations, we'll be considering putting about $4,000 into a line to do the survey.
Yeah, I'll have Carl give me more information on the actual cost.
But this has all come up because of where to put the...
Guardrail.
Guardrail, thank you.
Yeah, currently it's on that red line.
Which red line?
I wanted to describe it. The boundary of the, second, the first, if you're coming in from Main Street, the first red line.
Yeah, okay, the one that looks like the 68? Later in your packet is a aerial photograph, and the barrier is evident in that photograph. There's a line of parked cars in the public parking lot, and then you see a dark line, that's the barrier. There was a question, though, of relocating that guardrail.
Closer to Temple Street, still allowing for cars to park head-on from Temple, because those two lots, the corner lot and the one next to it, that's where they park their vehicles now.
I would recommend it's split difference.
Go halfway from where it is now to Temple Court?
And that, what that does, it could allow some double parking.
So I'm, well, it would be like the next boundary line of that property. Approximately. That would be 24 feet deep.
Well, certainly if there's an opportunity to gain parking in the village area, I ought to pursue that. Yeah. Moving the barrier even halfway into that, the red square that you see, will add three more diagonal parking.
I don't go there that often, but I mean, is it something that, is that parking lot typically used a lot, or?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
By who? I mean, the laundromat, I mean, that's a private, I mean, that was a, you know, it's a municipal lot, but yet the laundromat people would park, people would park there.
There are signs at the head of the driveway saying public parking.
Public parking, right. But that laundromat area, you know, where the two tanks are beyond that, I mean, that's there, I would assume that's, that's part of that building?
Here?
Too white, too white.
Out there.
Yeah, under the tree.
Yeah. I don't know the grade of it, but.
The zoning sketch does show that there's perhaps room for four cars behind the laundromat, that's officially is the parking for that building. Not much. By today's standards.
Would people be able to safely back out onto Temple Court if they parked there, if you moved the guardrail? Because, I mean, it looks like that one house is like literally right on the road, and it's a pretty narrow, I mean, that's like a driveway. Whereas they may have been able to use that, it's a pretty, it's a larger area that they could almost turn around internally there, whereas it looks fairly narrow.
Sue, I, I would recommend that we have Public Works bring us a design, rather than us engineering here at this meeting.
Okay.
And there's no urgency to put the barrier back up.
No, they're still under construction.
So, how about in two weeks? Is the board happy with that? Yeah, I think a concept plan.
Yep.
I, I'll be, my whole thing with, I don't know, I want to, we're gonna wait another couple of weeks anyway, in terms of, do we, are we taking a vote on, on putting something in a budget now? Because I'm just wondering if it's...
That was my understanding.
Okay. Trying to weigh the, is it worth it?
We, we know that there's a boundary line discrepancy dealing with the town parcel. Natural for us to resolve that in a prudent manner.
Oh, I understand, but...
Now that it's been brought to our attention.
The economy, the way that it is, I mean, I don't know if I want to, you know, fourth, you know, we're gonna be talking about thousands of dollars here and there, I just don't know, is there any other way of resolving a boundary dispute other than hiring a survey? And why do, and?
No.
And do we ever split the cost of surveying with the other abutting people, or no, when it involves abutting parcels? And then where is it going to go from there? I mean, are we gonna get?
You don't know what you're gonna find. You don't know what you're gonna find.
I know that, I'm just saying, as opposed to put the, put the guardrail back where it was, no, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I think it's worth going to DPW and asking them to prepare a concept plan, see how many spaces we can actually get, assuming these property lines are right. There's two, there's two things going on here, one is where to put the metal buried guardrail back in, in the parking lot, and Director of Public Works can give us a concept plan for where to reinstall.
Isn't that area generally pretty, like, muddy?
It does, when it rains, it floods. Entire area floods.
And now that's been regraded after the sewer line installation?
It's still loose.
We don't know, because it hasn't rained.
It's rained for several weeks, so it's hard to say.
Well, that's, Sue, when you mention this to the Director of Public Works, please mention that, pay attention to the grading of the whole parcel. Try to solve that at the same time. I understand the sewer commission is paying for the installation, but Public Works will be able to interface with them. So, so Selectman Gross, there's two things going on, immediately here in the near future, we'd like to determine where to put the guardrail back in, but the long-term problem is we're aware of a, a boundary line dispute probably with the abutter, I mean, that needs to be resolved.
Okay.
The side issue of that is if the abutter has infrastructure built on town land, and that's confirmed through the survey, then there'll be a decision about what to do.
Right, and I guess, so we're, we're clear here, it's, this is the land that we're talking about the same question.
Yes, yes, I see.
Which is not that big.
It's about 10 feet wide.
And I guess what I would like to know from a DPW perspective of, if we didn't have that land, even if you wanted to increase parking, would it have any impact whatsoever? Because could, could we not then voluntarily say, you know what, these folks, whoever owns these parcels, we are voluntarily going to amend this so that we know this is ours and be done with it?
That could be, through the survey action, it could be a subdivision of that parcel, and the 10 feet.
I'm not saying that being a survey action, I'm saying it just being done voluntarily.
Yeah, you could do, um...
A lot line adjustment or something.
A lot line adjustment.
My, my point, David, is to spend $4,000 for a survey to pick up what looks like the size of a small pool for town land, which you're not going to use in the first place, is a waste in my, my opinion of $4,000. Now, if however, that tiny little parcel of land somehow gives you the ability to park all these, you know, additional cars, or it's needed for drainage or whatever, then maybe it's valuable to us, but other than that, it's like, why spend $4,000 for something that we don't have a need for? Just to say that we want to get the record straight.
Unfortunately, that 10-foot strip has been built on by an abutter.
Right.
A rather nice-looking shed, and the rest has all been well landscaped. So there's, one could have a view that that 10-foot strip has no purpose for town parking, and therefore does the town need it in the long run? Or could it be transferred to that person through some, you know, means after the survey? Those are decisions that can be done next year.
Okay.
You want to do it without the survey?
I don't want to do it with the survey, as a matter of fact, I would approach a land.
If there's a mechanism for doing that.
If I didn't think we needed that land, I'd say the landowner, I'll tell you what, for a thousand bucks, we'll give you the land, and we'll do a lot line adjustment, and now we've got a net savings. I save four from doing the survey, and then I'm picking up another thousand dollars in revenue, so, and we're in a better position, because I just don't think that we're gonna necessarily, we haven't, we haven't used it.
Selectmen DeVanzo, can, in your experience, can we do lot line adjustments without a survey? Down here you won't. Not in this congested area you won't.
I, I think one of the things, though, before you even start talking about that, there are other issues also, because that right away could possibly be used for sewer, it could be used for something else, drainage or something else in the area, so there may not be something that you may want to just relinquish that, that quickly.
I'm just, what I'm trying to make is that we're...
We're talking about the 10-foot strip in here.
We want to spend $4,000 for what is essentially probably an area that's about the size of this room.
If I may.
Yes. If, if that.
If I may, yes, I mean, we're really speculating. I'd like to see a concept plan from DPW, because there is a need for parking downtown. We talk about, you know, working with the business owners to bring business to area in this town, including downtown, if we can show them that there's some increased public parking available, I think we ought to do it. It doesn't take much to go to the DPW and, and develop a concept plan, assuming these are the property lines. And then we can have, then we can talk intelligently about how many spaces we're picking up, and whether or not it provides opportunity for utility extension, those sorts of things, because right now, it's just a red square on a piece of paper. And that parking lot does get used, maybe not on a day-to-day basis, but certainly when there's events downtown, or anything of significance going on, that parking lot is full. And the area of the town land that's on the bottom of the page, which would be the, on the other side of the guardrail, that area is also used for public parking. Perhaps could be the residents in the area, too, because they have limited, unlimited parking on their small parcels. If that public parking space wasn't available, they'd be on the street. And that would not be allowed in the wintertime. And I'm not suggesting we move forward to the budget question at this point, just let's develop a concept plan and see what, see what it looks like. I don't think that's... Next step is for the Director of Public Works to bring the concept back of how to best use that land, and to include the 10-foot strip that's been adopted by the abutter.
Okay. Next item is Municipal Volunteer of the Year nominations. This is 4G. Nominations must be submitted by the end of August, so if you have any nominations, let me know.
Any board members?
You, something we do typically in public or non-public?
Or be allowed to? I assume it would be non-public. I would feel more comfortable in non-public.
Okay.
We'll do that at the end.
H is draft department head evaluation form, such we're emailed to you earlier today, and you should have had a copy in your bag tonight.
Did these go out to the department heads?
They, they went out to the department heads today, and I did get some responses. I think from everyone, actually, that I sent it to. Yes, I do.
What were the?
The ones directly about the actual form, um, the fire chief noted that wherever employee is, he may wanna change that to department head on the first page and throughout.
Or, not throughout, it can't be throughout, because sometimes the employee refers to their employees.
Okay.
So, I think we have to be cognizant of that, but-
Where is it you're talking about?
The term employee, I mean-
Yeah, but where, I was looking-
Well, all throughout the first page.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
Several places.
So rather than say, first one, the performance summary form is designed to describe an employee's job performance, it would change it to department head job performance.
He also questioned the use of the boxes up here for, for us. That was on the state form.
Right.
Just get rid of those?
So, get rid of all of that?
Yeah.
That was most of his, and he, he would've preferred seeing, um, you know, your evaluation boxes next to each one of the criteria.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, I would agree.
Next to each one of the criteria.
Yeah, because you could, you have five different things, and you might be, um, meets expectations in leadership, but your exceeds expectations in teamwork.
I told him, I think we had done that to shorten the, uh, form and-
Scott, I believe there's one set of boxes for a factor, like personnel management. And, and to decide which of the five boxes is, is most fitting, you, you consider all the factors below that, and you come to one conclusion.
Right.
You don't, you don't individually vote on each of the subset.
There are, I'm saying, there, I did talk to the chief this afternoon, I mean, in his evaluation of his employees, it is, it is, um, based upon each one, and then there's an overall score. And let's say it's out of a hundred, let's say there's twenty criteria, and then, you know, they're graded in that respect.
So, Scotty, are you suggesting, for instance, on communications, the five boxes across the top would relate to number one verbal, and then above number two written, there'd be a series of five more boxes?
That's what the chief, that's what the fire chief and I talked about, uh, this afternoon, that, that it would, because, um, and then what he has in his own employees is then he kinda tallies it up at the end, they have, I think they have twenty. And then you have a possibility of getting between one and five, so in essence, it's, it's a scale of one to a hundred. And then on his form, and don't quote me on it, but I believe it, it states that if you're, you know, between sixty and eighty, that's acceptable performance, eighty to a hundred is, you know, exceeds expected performance, that type of thing.
I mean, I could see where that might be beneficial, because it gets in, into more of the specifics, but I think there needs to be an overall performance criteria ranking for communications. You know what I mean?
That's what this does.
Well, this would be a specific, and where's the overall one?
That one's overall, the one under communications, that's to use the three criteria below it, but just give one ranking for communications.
That's what my recommendation would be.
That's, that's how it's currently set up.
And that's how the state form is currently set up, correct, Selectman?
No, the state, I'm, I'm still not following you, but the way the state form works is you either are below, meet, or exceed the, the performance criteria for communications.
Period.
So, that's the overall rank.
And in, to, to determine what do you mean by communications, in this case, there's three different factors to consider.
Right. So, this box isn't specific.
Factor for verbal, written, and listening.
Okay.
One, you, you may be stronger in one than the others, but you're-
But they're all lumped in.
So, let's just say hypothetically that if you had a department head who had exceeds expectations for verbal and for written, but was meets expectations for listening, you have that judgment of putting them-
One or the other.
Yeah, well, one or the other, or the, or the one in between. You can feel that, you can say, I feel that verbal and written communications outweigh the listening, and therefore we're-
And that's, that's where the comment box, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then nothing.
The other issues that were pointed out by department heads were not really related to the form as much as to process. They were asking questions like, who will be doing the evaluation? It was the selectman liaison or rep to the department sitting down with the department head doing it. They were just process-type of questions.
Selectmen DeVance, I guess.
On page two, uh, the very last two, uh, things, they seem like they're both the same.
Yeah, they are.
That they are.
They are. They're supposed to be the same?
That came from the state ones.
Where were you again, Phil?
Page-
Page two.
Under the, uh-
Communications.
Third factor, listening.
Yeah.
The last two.
The two on the right are the same text, and perhaps that was a mistype. We'll have to refer back.
Maybe was it cutting pace or something that got duplicated or something?
It might've. I mean, when I, when I look at that one, I think the way you would distinguish it is, not, not so much as a person, as a very good listener, open to differing points of view, good two-way communications, this, but somebody who actually fosters that environment, or is a role model for, you know, making sure that everyone is heard.
The state form had the same text.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one came right from the state.
You wanna amend it and just send Sue something to differentiate?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just questioning, you know, why they were the same. I guess, no, the, the reason why I'm saying that is from what my understanding was from the chief, that he wanted to see these boxes along each one of these, and the discussion that we had was that these boxes are for the letters. The letters A, B, C, D are the things that we're ranking. Those are the type, those are the, the subjects.
Yes.
The criteria. The, the following, the letters, the one, two, and, the numerals, rather, one, two, and three, make up how you get to that.
Exactly.
And the question that I have, though, is, in the, listening to that discussion, what was going through my mind, is the way that you could come up to these boxes, cause as you went through here, you could check these off, which one it was, but when you got down to the bottom, it's, doesn't seem to be equal. In other words, number one and number two, if I have five different criteria to grade somebody on that, and now I'm, I get to the third thing, I only have four criteria.
This, the, the text in the fourth and fifth criteria for listening, we can wordsmith that to make it slightly different.
Well, but I-
I'm just, it, on the original state form, it was the same text.
I, I, I understand that, but I guess what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a rationale and a consistency as to how you go through the process of the numbers one, two, and three, to come up with a conclusion out of those three as to how to check off one of the five boxes for A.
Or if you're on the leadership, you have five different factors to be, to think about for what is meant by leadership.
Well, I'm trying to find out how we go through the process of taking those three, on, on page one, for example. How do we take those three items and come to a conclusion to reach number four? And what you obviously cannot do is take, since you have five for number one, you have two, uh, five for number two, but I only have four for number three. I can't rank those. In other words, one says unable to convey.
We understand that. I think we have to wordsmith-
Okay, as long as we're all on the same page.
Exceeds expectations for the listening one.
But, uh, it's my rationale of how you get to the final conclusion of which box to check on the front, is going through these and selecting one of those three.
Correct.
And then those have to be. So, it would seem to me, just so that we have an understanding, if I went through this and I was doing this, and let's say I came to the third one for each one of these three items, then I would look at that and say, okay, I've got the third one, which is the middle one, I would say meets expectations, which is the third one. Is that the way that this should be done?
Yes. If, if, if for the three factors called communications, if you happen to be, if the person happened to be exactly in the middle for all three of those factors, then it's a simple decision, you check off the middle box.
Right.
You have some more leeway if it's, if you had a number two on one factor, and a number four on another, and a number three on the other. Then you, you have to-
Would still add up to the same.
You, you have to make a decision on how you-
I understand.
Make a summary vote.
Okay.
The question was about, you know, the process. And I've been doing these things for a long time, and I think the process that works the best is that each one of us would individually, cause we do have interactions, some of it's limited, um, more so than others. But we would each go through and, and, um, and rate the department head based upon our interactions, our knowledge of, of how they perform. We would then, in a non-public session, then consents about those things. Now, in doing so, if I had a limited interaction with one of the department heads, and I might have said, oh, I think that person meets expectations, however, through the consensus process, others had said, yeah, but did you take into consideration that this department head did this, did this, and did this? Oh, no, I didn't. Oh, okay. I feel more comfortable going, you know, moving upwards or downwards, however it may be. And then, so you can sense, all five of us would, would kind of consents on the performance of that particular individual. So I see it being first an individual exercise done by each of us independently, then we have a consensus building. And then from there, um, the liaison select person would then meet with that department head and go over what was, represents the consensus of the board.
Before or after the chairman signs?
I would do it before.
Meet with the department head before.
Before the chairman signs. And I say that because there may be instances in which maybe we did not know some of the things that, maybe the department had articulated some things, oh, no, you may, you forgot about this, this, and this.
Well, there's another step. Did you want employee input?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
And when? And when?
Prior to us consensing, because that, the reason why I say that is, let's say for an example that I have, I have the fire department. I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do mine individually, but by the same token, I'm gonna have a conversation with, with the chief as to where he thinks he falls with specific examples.
Because you're the selectman's rep to that department.
Now, when we do our consensus building, and, and everyone kinda goes around the table, if Selectman LeMay agrees or disagrees with me, I can at least say, yeah, but did you factor in that the chief has done, I've talked to the chief, he's done X, Y, and Z. And does that change your, your opinion? Cause that's his feedback. You know, I'm, I'm articulating almost his version.
So, you see the first step, it's not that each, the first step is, well, each selectman rep is meeting with the department head before they-
Right.
Fill out the form. So, that's their, the department head's opportunity for input, right there?
Right.
Okay.
Like, uh, let me try and understand, is that, may I? The way I see this working is that the, the BOs rep would perform the initial evaluation, bring it, bring it to the full board, because I don't have a clue how effectively the fire chief communicates. But certainly the liaison would. And so they would do the initial appraisal, and then bring, each would press, bring it back, and then one of us would have to say, well, I agree the fire chief, and then this is just a hypothetical out there. Says, well, yeah, he's good communicating. So, well, I had an opportunity to try and communicate with him, it wasn't very good. And so then the whole board could adjust. Is that what you're saying, Scott? Am I, am I on the same sort of wavelength with you or not?
I, my, my opinion is that I, I think that we all get a pretty good ability to interact with all of the department heads in which we deal with, on, even on some limited basis. So I think you may not be able to answer every single solitary question for every department head, but I think you can do the, the lion's share of them, based upon our interactions when they come in, um, whether, you know, we've been to any of their, their departments or events, things of that nature.
But you've been a selectman longer than the two new people have been selectmen. They may not be comfortable doing every department.
And in that, and in that case, then they may decide to leave it blank, or-
When we come into the non-public consensus building, wrapping up five drafts of a form for an, for one individual, that does, that would be brought out into discussion.
Yeah.
So, either way, we get to a consensus of the board.
Correct.
Yes.
It's not, it's not just-
That's which, that's which box gets checked.
Right. It wouldn't be just the liaisons.
Yeah, okay, well, either way, we get there, I guess doesn't-
The backside of the form facilitates what we brought out into the discussion. From the, uh, non-public consensus building, at the top of the back page, you, you're selecting one of three boxes, and there's opportunity for comments by the board. The next sentence down is the meeting with an employee, and for the employee to provide comments. We brought that up in discussion. Then at some later date, you actually sign. That's what I heard suggested just a moment ago, and, and the back of the form facilitates that timeline as a process.
Which is where I was heading, before I didn't have a chance to finish my thoughts. Because it does follow through. You meet with them. Either individually we meet, we come up with a board consensus as to which box gets checked. Then the liaison goes back and has a sit-down with the department head, which is the back page. And these are the general, below meets or exceeds, comments from the board, and you have an opportunity to sit with them. And it's not uncommon to adjust the boxes after the sit-down, at least my experience, and I've been doing it a long time too, with this form. You adjust the boxes one way or the other. And the boxes are pretty gen, general. I mean, there's only five of them. Two below, I mean, one below, two below, two meet, and one exceeds. And so then, you know, you get sort of a general feeling here. The real meat of this whole thing is the meeting with the employee, the goals and the objectives, and where you go from there. I think it works pretty good. Cause it is an interactive process, it allows the, the department head, again, to provide their perspective on things. And it's not unusual to change your mind based upon that interaction.
The instructions on the first page cover what would happen in a full calendar year. We may wanna discuss how to implement this, if we're gonna implement it this summer, or do we implement it in January?
The other thing too is that these don't necessarily have to follow calendar years. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to. It, it could follow budget cycles, it could follow election years, it could follow any, any, any time in which you wanna, but it just has to be every six months or a year when you do it. Is there a timeframes, I would sue that is best for, we typically, when do we, if, if we were to, in the past, this board has reviewed department heads' work and during, you know, end of year or, and been able to evaluate performance, whether or not it warranted any type of special compensation. This has to align a little bit with that, I think, so that it gives the board that flexibility, I would think.
Yeah, I, I think you've done it like in November in the past, October, November, but- There's no clear, I mean, when we had steps, we always did evaluations in June before the July first step. But department heads have bound steps, so.
Yeah, my experience has always been a one-year timeframe. Where that is can slide one way, there, depending on when the employee was hired. Uh, there may be something, you may wanna shift it one way or another, depending upon something that, some unusual circumstance that doesn't warrant it being included in that.
At the state level, when they use this form, do they do it for a specific time period to tie in with any kind of bonuses or raises?
If you're getting an increment adjustment, you have to, because that's, you know, you have to adjust their pay.
So, that's when they do it for an increment adjustment?
But when, when they're just, um, an annual, the first box is called an annual. I mean, it's, that's just for the supervisor's ability to work with their employees and improve employee performance, and it can be- And it can be any twelve-month period, it doesn't really matter.
So I guess that leads to the question, are we looking at this as an annual performance evaluation or an increment?
I'm trying to think of an example. The only example I can think of off, off the cuff is, there's an employee who was out for an extensive period of time on FMLA. Well, can you really evaluate him? I mean, I'm talking four or five months. Can you really evaluate him? Or do you slide it to get that out of there so it doesn't, you know, tilt or, you know, the, the evaluation one way or the other? That's one example I can think of. I'm sure there's others, but-
And see, mine is not, the ones that I'm used to, I'm used to doing, it is tied into what you would get for your, you know, merit or any type of bonus or things of that nature. So it does have to align, you know, with that, because that's, that's, this is a tool that you're user, using to demonstrate whether someone is gonna get X percentage, whether it be merit or, or bonus, and, and, and it falls into that. We don't typically, we're not, we don't have that same system here per se, although, um, that's not to say that we could not embark on some sort of a, I'm not saying a salary pool, but a bonus pool, which would, which would allow us to recognize department heads who are, you know, or differentiate department heads based upon performance evaluations, knowing that they're still getting their baseline, you know, merit, um, ratings or raises, but yet there is different compensation that may be through a form of a bonus that, you know, you can, you can provide somebody who's done more than what's expected.
Okay, then that has budget implications and we would, I would need the direction to budget for such a pool because there isn't one now.
My recommendation is to do all the evaluations at a set time, once a year.
Yeah, I agree.
One option would be at the conclusion of budget activities, which essentially gets wrapped up with the deliberative session, if not slightly before. The whole budget cycle ends then with the deliberative session or slightly before. And then, once you start a twelve-month period, it's within the first month of that twelve-month, the department heads are presented with a final budget and they're executing that budget and they're making decisions for the remainder of the year. As well as proposing the following year budget. So it gives a lot of, it gives the execution of the budget in the first part of that twelve-month period, as well as the formation of the budget in the latter half of the six months. And there's things to be rated, you know, things to look at, as well as projects during the year.
The other thing that we could also consider is that, do you want, then again, alignment with the, the elections and/or when goals get typically set? Because then you can kind of incorporate these performance and goals into it, so there's a little bit more consistency. And the way, the only way to do that is, you'd really would be looking at more of a beginning of, say, uh, mid to late April, because that's when we kind of, if you had new members and you're talking about your goals for the year, and then-
They set your goals by the end of April.
Right. So, or you may be looking at end of April or May, so it would be a, you know, a May to May.
Which is sort of a compromise on what I just mentioned. It's within a month after the budget is set-
Right.
-with the March election, a month after that, you're then executing the budget. And as well as the new board is appointing ourselves as to represent each department.
If we did do April or May, then it would tie into what has historically been July is when, right? In terms of, I know that's when-
Increases July first.
Increases usually go July first, so that might work.
The rating period started in April, you mean? The twelve-months period starts in April.
Or May.
Or May.
Even though it takes effect in July one.
Yeah.
If there was a bonus or something of that, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so if you, if your start day was like May, let's just say May first to April thirtieth.
Right. Right.
You would give, if that's your evaluation period.
Within thirty days after the end of April in your case, the evaluations would be final.
Right.
Is there a probationary period for new hires or people who are?
Um, I don't think department head level had a probationary period, did they?
Yeah, we did.
You did?
And-
I don't remember that in conditional offers of employment, so I'd have to check. We don't do department, hire department heads every day, so it's-
Yeah, but I, I, my recollection is that we do. Did we do with Rick? He's the most recent.
I'll have to check.
I don't remember.
And when they get raises or step increases?
There are no step increases for department heads.
There are none.
No.
All they get is a cost of living adjustment, or when the board determines that, you know, the market determines that-
Salary increase.
Yes.
Okay. So there is no increment.
Right.
But there is a probationary period. Do we want to make some tentative process decisions tonight and then review or bring that back to the table in two weeks?
I'd like to start doing this as soon as we can personally.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to put it into practice and then revisit it after a year or two, see how it's working. And we can adjust it at that point, so I think the sooner the better.
Okay, so you agree with changing employee, we're appropriate to department head and doing away with this top box? And changing the period then from what to what?
I was okay with May.
May first to April thirtieth?
Because I think that gives you, even if, now, if we were to do that, I just, you know, just for the sake of argument here, there's never a good time in terms of doing like a six-month review, but, which is what we, we should be doing. Six months would be-
I thought they were annual reviews.
They're annual, but, also, we're just gonna do this once a year?
That's typically what we do.
We're not gonna, okay, hmm, okay. All right. And then, so we would be doing them probably in the, they'd be due-
So are you gonna wait to one full term before you do one, or are you gonna do one by, by April thirtieth?
I think we, I think, I think we start one as soon as possible and just end it.
So you do one in April thirtieth of two thousand thirteen, or?
Even though maybe a fraction of the year.
No, personally, I think we start now and it will run through April thirtieth of next year.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So you want to do the May first one, or you want to evaluate back to May first right now?
Yeah.
So the evaluation period for the first one-
One awkward situation is, at some years, in March, you're gonna have two new board members, possibly. So the, uh, the evaluation that one would do at the end of April or within thirty days after that on that situation, the two new board members of a lesser role. But they're learning how the process works.
But I will say this though, even though that is the case, how do I put this? At work, when I do this, I have to, a lot of times, there are people that I don't have hardly any dealings with. But yet, the others that come into the, the manager that come to the table may know these people, and it's their job to articulate why they feel this person is, exceeds expectations, meets expectations. And then they, they talk about what they do or the results that they've gotten. So even though I don't know them, if it's kind of clearly understood that, like, if I, if I was a new selectman and there was three other people there and they told me that this department head did this, this, and this, even if I'm brand spanking new, you should be able to say, oh, wow, that is, that clearly, and this is what they should, this is what a department head should be doing, you clearly should be able to determine where they fall, even though you don't have a whole lot of interaction with them.
It could be awkward when the, uh, the incumbent is not re-elected and he was the primary point of contact for a department head, the one closest.
But the fact that we rotate yearly, or we can, you know, I don't think, there's always gonna be some issues. But I think, right now, we don't have anything. And I, I think this is, we've made a pretty good strides at, at having some sort of documentation as to, and to provide feedback to the department heads.
So to get back with us for the first performance evaluation period, is it from May first, two thousand eleven to April thirtieth, two thousand twelve?
No.
And you're evaluating now for that time period?
I think we should do May two thousand and twelve, which is, you know, a couple of months back, to April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen.
So you won't do it till two thousand thirteen because of, oh, okay. I thought you were saying you wanted to start now, and that's why, it's like, hmm. All right, the other question that was raised by Rick, uh, I won't read you his whole email. Um, he says, "The Parks and Rec director, uh, ha, and library director have many supervisors, commissioners, trustees, board of selectmen community. With that being said, whose direction do you follow on goals and objectives? If I have goals which are in conflict between the commission and board of selectmen, I lose. I understand the IRSAs give directions to the standalone library and to some degree Parks and Rec. Where does everyone else fall?" So he's wondering, you know, where the, I, I, from this I take, where are the Parks and Rec commissions in this whole evaluation process? Because he works directly with them.
Well, let me ask a question. Has the Parks and Rec commission been given this for their input?
No, not yet.
Do they do a separate one?
I've never seen an evaluation.
I'm ju, I'm just, I'm just asking the questions, I mean, is that something that, I mean, obviously for the library director, this is, we're not gonna be doing this because we don't review the library director.
The trustees review her.
Right.
What does the statute say? I don't know if it, I don't know-
On the Parks and Rec commission, since this is not an elected Parks and Rec commission, it's an appointed Parks and Rec commission, it gets its authority from this board. So if you want to direct the Parks and Rec commission to do the evaluation of the Parks and Rec director, you could do that. Give them the form and have them do it. And then have that come back to you and see if there's a consensus at this level. But, you know, Rick points out, there may be differing goals between both boards.
That's a problem though.
That's a problem for him, yeah.
That's a problem, period.
Right. That's a problem.
Because technically, there, there should, you know, the reasons why we have all boards meetings and we, you know, and they are appointed, et cetera, they, they should be closely aligned with each other. There's gonna be disagreements, there's no, there's no doubt about it, but they should be closely aligned.
Can I, just, for one thing, I mean, um, and, and I, I have to say, just, just to get it on the record, I mean, you say that we have nothing. Okay? And when you say that we have nothing, I'm assuming that you mean that we have nothing written down into a form like this to do department heads. Because where I've always been is that we do have something, except that it's not written down. Because we've had closer interaction between a department, uh, the department head and an individual disle, selectman in the past. And that individual selectman that was assigned to those departments had a closer, much closer relationship with the department head than we do today. So that is a person who's, when they go there and they meet with the person, they're actually going through these things, maybe not in a written format. Okay? But on a day-to-day basis, and if there's a problem, that person would come back to the board and bring that up to the board. Although it wasn't in a written formal thing, and I understand some people have to have everything written down in a format, in a form that you put in a folder and it's written down someplace. Okay? But in the past, we haven't operated that way, and I have to say, we have mo, mostly, the majority of the times, we've had excellent department heads. Everybody makes mistakes, but, uh-
Right, and I think that the need for the document is for the minority of instances in which you might have a department head who is not meeting-
I, I understand. The point that I was trying to make though, the main thing, I think that we all have the goal, and whether this was to a board of, goes to Parks and Rec commission, is that we come out, basically, you want to come out in the middle, the, the third one, at, at, at a minimum. That's where everybody should be. If you're below that, you have a problem. If you're above that, that's even, you don't have a problem, you're better off.
Now, in, since we're talking about Parks, Parks and Rec, you know, personally, I would feel comfortable saying, this is his, this is Rick's evaluation. The board of selectmen has the ultimate authority as to what, as to supervising this individual. However, we, we definitely want you collectively to take this evaluation in a non-public session, fill it out collectively, what you feel as a, as a, as a commission, the job that you think, and I will then take that as your liaison to Parks and Rec. And when we have our consensus, your input is going to be conveyed to the rest of the board of selectmen.
That's, that's part of the process that we're discussing. It could work in that situation.
That's how personally I would handle it.
Yeah, I, I would say it's this board, this is a tool for this board to evaluate the department heads. And when it comes to the department heads dealing with commissions and other groups of people, you know, that's in here. C talks about program management, D talks about professional relationships, and it talks about, it uses words like stakeholders and peers and other groups. And that's what these stakeholders and peers are, the commissions. I mean, and we're gonna know if they're working effectively with it, because we're gonna hear from the commissions if they're unhappy or disgruntled with the way a department head's working. So I, I think it's in here. I mean, I, I understand where Rick's coming from. He may feel like he's happened to answer more than one master, but not really. I mean, it's our job to evaluate him. It's our job to look at these different things and figure out whether or not he is an effective program manager by working with his stakeholders and peers.
So do you agree that the Parks and Rec commission should be filling this out as input to the board of selectmen on him? On the director?
No.
You don't?
I think it gets too complex at that point. I mean, who do you, who do you let fill this out and who don't you let fill it out? I mean, that's just my take on it. Considerably, the, our representative to the commission could meet with the chair of the commission and review the form. And I, I would almost expect he would, to be honest with you. And then, then that representative would come back to the full board for our consensus, for the final evaluation.
So the Parks and Rec selectman's rep meets with the Parks and Rec commission chairman to go over the eval, his evaluation of the department head?
Could work that way.
Mm-hmm. I think you, I mean, I think you need to get their, their input. And the same thing, even on solid waste commission, where typically, like Carl is the, involved in those meetings. I mean, that's another commission that-
Same, same thing.
You know, and the other thing that comes into this is, you know, it was in the paper about, you know, the surveys, you know? Let's face it, I mean, by doing surveys, we're, we're asking, the, the public is almost doing a performance appraisal, or they're giving their feedback, shall I say, to, to department heads as to how they think they're doing. So I, I think it's all a good thing.
Selectman Adams, at the state level, in the use of this form, was there a cover sheet saying, or presenting this to the individual? Saying this is the form that we'll be using for the following year? Yes, yeah, all the employees are familiar with the form. We did a lot of cut and paste and we threw pages away. I'm, I'm afraid that might have been one of the pages we threw away. No, I, I don't think so, but it's, this certainly is available to every employee. They know what the content of the form is like. Is that what you're questioning? So by, I'm, I'm trying to think, uh, a few weeks ahead right now. We just put the dates in here that the following twelve-month period is the evaluation, and then these are just presented to the department heads. They're effectively, they're under this evaluation for the twelve-month period.
My question that I would ask is that, we, we render these annually. For the first go-around, do we want to say pick the month of September where we just kind of go through it and have that chance where we get a, not a dry run per se, but we, we do, we could go through so that we kind of, everybody kind of knows what the process kind of, you know, feels like, and we'll call it a, I don't know, a s- six-month review or something like that, but at least it gets us, this way it's not brand spanking new to everybody come next, next April. Because generally, October gets busy with budgets, but September is not generally speaking.
September is not the budget process, but-
Yeah. It's not that big of a, a time where, so we iron out the bugs before it really is, you know, more official.
How would it be less official?
What?
How would it be less official?
The end of October would be the six-month period. What other activities is go, are going on?
Oh, budgets, big time.
Budgets, you're gonna be out straight with budgets.
Yeah, so you can't do October.
Starts in September and goes through the end of the year, basically.
I, I hear the consensus of the board that we're, we want to implement this for the period, one May to thirty April. Thirty April through twenty thirteen. We've had some modification of the forms discussed this evening. Probably some changes in that listening factor for communications, so that the same words aren't repeated.
Can I, can I ask a question then? Instead of that time, how about June? Why wouldn't you wanna do June? End of June. What are the pros and cons?
Because if you're trying, if you, maybe he has some pros and cons.
Well, I guess the thing that I have a concern about is the fact that if you're looking at April, you have the potential, I mean, you're talking about the potential of two new members. You also have a potential having a circumstance where you might have three new members. But generally, you could part, to, have two, and it just seems that June might be a little further out. And I, if there's a particular reason why you wouldn't wanna do June as opposed to April.
If you were gonna tie anything into the fiscal year, which starts July one, I'm talking about salaries I'm talking about. Then you would want, if there are any decisions there, that's the only reason why you would do it. Wait, you'd wanna give yourself a little bit of time to kind of process that. Yeah, I, I, I don't, I, I can, I tend to agree with you. I think that a, a little bit more time might be beneficial in that respect, because then new board members might have, would have two or three months under their belt at that time.
So, you're suggesting June first through May thirty first?
Yeah, unless there's a reason, and, you know, not, other times of the year, you know, budget, that, that's, that's hectic, that, that's tough to do it. You know, you start getting into, uh, what are you gonna start doing? Are you gonna start doing it in January? I mean, you know, January or February, are you gonna do it?
Get through a deliberative session, town meeting, business hours.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's just, it's just, I don't think it's a, you know,
Art warrant articles coming out.
When you start weighing it, and I just have a concern that.
June first gives one more month of, of new members getting it under their belt. June first, huh?
No, it's like you say, there's no ideal time.
But May in June is, it's usually better, so.
Yeah.
Can I suggest an edit to the document itself for clarity?
Sure.
I think the heading might read clearer if it said, Town of Gostown, new line, Board of Selectmen, space, Department Head, new line, Performance Summary Form. That's what's a little more clear and.
Town of Gostown, Board of Selectmen.
Space, Department Head, Performance Summary Form. Really fun minor edit.
I, I agree with that.
On the last page.
Last page.
General comments by the Board of Selectmen, specific to job performance. There's a sad face on the end of this, on the end of the line. There's an unmatched parenthesis, parentheses there that come out.
Right, right, right.
It's a mustache, Kelly.
Actually, you have another one of those too, on the top, on the overall summary.
Yeah.
And that one's bold.
Yep.
But at least there's a, there's a beginning parenthesis there.
Well, there's a beginning.
Yeah, at least they're proved up, yeah.
There's, there's no need for the colons, really.
That's just a funny thing.
Sue, uh, bring us back a clean copy for two weeks from now, and, and I think at that time, we'll just make an official announcement that these are effective.
Thank you. Last week, uh, Selectman Lemay had given you the EDC report and their request to appear before the Board of Selectmen to discuss, um, Glen Lake and use of Glen Lake by a kayak company or canoe company?
It was a, it was a canoe company, I believe.
Yeah, and we discussed it, but we never said yea or nay to having the EDC come forward, so that's why it's back in here this week.
Let's do it.
Have them come?
Have me, come here.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. And that's it for the town administrator's report? Thank you, sir. Selectmen's discussion, owed business. Captain, you are here for anything special, or?
Just any discussion on the EDC, sir.
No owed business? Uh, new business. It's gonna be a short meeting tonight.
I can talk about the fire unless Scott wants to talk about it.
Okay. Committee reports. Fire station improvement committee.
Yep, I, um, met last week in, uh, the Pinnardville Station. Uh, had a, a full committee meeting, and we went through the, uh, the report, made some, uh, adjustments to it. I'd rather not, um, give a summary of that, because that committee is going to report out to us. And I, I think it would steal their, their thunder. Um, I will say that I, you know, ha- um, Selectman Lemay attended all the meetings, this last one I attended, and, uh, it's a very good group. Uh, they have looked at a whole lot of different options, so, um, I, the one thing that I asked that be included in the report, um, was to talk about the successes that we've had with, uh, with the grants. Also talking about how we've tried to, we, not, not tried, we have reduced the number of apparatus that we have. Um, because I think we need to tell, in the report itself, which is gonna be a public document, we, we have to tell the story of what, uh, this current, our current fire chief has done, um, with respect to reducing the fleet, um, bringing in grant monies. And what you'll see is that, in, a couple of years ago, when we talked about a central fire station and a pretty hefty, um, price tag for a central fire station, which would not have eliminated some of the other stations by, by the way, and they still would have needed upgrading. The, the proposal that you're going to see is a, is a staged, um, s- staged and incremental approach towards rehabbing our fire stations, but for, uh, substantially less than if we were to simply just build a central station, so. Um, and again, I'd rather not, uh, steal, uh, Chief O'Brien or the committee's thunder by, by going up, but they, but they do plan on setting up a time, uh, to deliver that, uh, report to us. Mark, did I miss anything?
No, I just will comment on, on what Scott said. I, I think if you've not seen Station eighteen lately, Station nineteen lately, you need to go visit the stations. I mean, we're putting apparatus in jeopardy every day, backing the apparatus in, backing and driving the apparatus out. I mean, things are so tight. Um, you know, the, these changes need to be made to the firehouses. We have in the past always built a fire truck to fit into the firehouse. That doesn't happen anymore today. We need to, I mean, we need to come up to the twenty-first century, we need to, we need to make it so that you have a safe working environment. And, and so that things, things.
You're gonna, you're gonna see photographs, you know, in the report, and it'll probably be a slide presentation. And it, it will depict exactly what Selectman Lemay, uh, has spoken to. Uh, most recently, there's electrical problems in.
At Station nineteen.
At Station nineteen. Um, there is a ru- a leaky roof, so we have to be, just like any of our assets, we have to, we have to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're not spending, you know, money on repairs again and again and again. They'll talk a little bit when they do their presentation, but, um, it was a lot of discussion about making sure that we have the right fire station to fit, um, more or less, how shall I say, stock vehicles. Right now, we spend, we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this recent, recent vehicle, simply because we, the space that we needed to fit it in was not, you know, standard. So, it had to be specially custom-made, which takes a lot longer and it costs more money. So, if you're, and they'll, and they'll talk about this in terms of the return on investment, but, um, there is considerable savings in being able to go and get a, you know, I would consider just a regular stock fire engine or, or ladder vehi- ladder truck, without having to retrofit everything and cut it down and change wheelbases and all the other stuff, simply because we gotta get it fit into a certain area. They're gonna talk to you about the, um, Till Hill Station, the concerns there. Um, it was built by volunteers, we have to be respectful of that. But, by the same token, it has a lot of issues to it. So, we need to be sensitive to the fact that it was built by hand, you know, by people who.
Oh, yeah. Blood, sweat and tears.
Tears, but by the same token, uh, there's, there's not a whole lot that we can do, you know, with that, with that station, without doing some major overhauling, so.
If I may, I mean, I would appreciate an opportunity to tour the stations, um, so that when we talk about this, I have a visual image of what the issues are that they're talking about, and I think would be of value, at least for me, um, to be able to tour these with, with the fire chief or his representatives, so.
I, I would just say, reach out to the chief. I, I'm not sure, I think most of us have been to the, you, you feel comfortable, yeah.
Well, I've been to all the stations, but, you know, I mean, when he talks, when they talk about certain restrictions or certain things, I mean, I, to me, it helps to have a visual image.
There's one, Carlos, there was one, like, I'd say, it's for everybody, it was one controversial issue, um, that, that came from that towards the end. And that was the practicality of knowing that, yes, we need to renovate our fire stations. But, there are also other capital needs at, on other departments, and there are other capital needs for the school district. And just so the two of you know, is that last year, um, we had a discussion with the school board as to what things were going on capital-wise, um, at the town level. And I think we need to have a similar conversation again and look to partner with or work with the, the school board. One, one of my concerns, obviously, is that, and I, I'll just give you my, this is my opinion, I mean, been through Bartlett School many times, I mean, that school is in pretty tough shape. If you haven't taken a tour of that one, I encourage you to do it. But by the same token, I, I made it pretty clear, um, during budget season, that I was not in favor of the renovation, um, to the athletic fields and other things. We have to come together, the elec- the elected officials, in my opinion, to get together and say, okay, this year, it's gonna be the renovation of the Bartlett School, next year, it's gonna be the renovation of this fire station, the next year, it's gonna be this. When, when, when we don't act together, um, what happens is everybody puts their stuff on these warrants, and the, one, the town can't afford it all in one year. And secondly, it looks like we're, we're not communicating with each other. Now, I know we can't guarantee, we cannot guarantee what the school board will do or other entities, because they're in, they're independently elected. But I don't think it can hurt that we would have that, have that dialogue, you know, with them. Because I think what happened last year in particulars, everything was on there. I think, I think people picked and choose and nothing passed, you know. And plus, it was, obviously, the economy is still, still the way that it is, but the issues with our fire stations, they're not going away. And we have to.
I, I believe that at all boards meeting, which is attended by, which was attended by the school board chairman, some of that discussion was presented. That there's capital needs for the school that are, are serious. And you've brought up capital needs for various departments in the town that are serious. And at that all-boards meeting, there, there wasn't, I didn't see a, a willingness to go down that road you were presenting, that there, there.
I did, actually. I thought Sol- I thought, um, Philip Pankos, he mentioned towards the end of the meeting that, you know, we need, we need to get together and start to talk some of the, I, I thought, I thought I heard that, you know, towards the end.
Well, okay, we'll, we'll both be reviewing the notes then.
Yeah.
But, um, it, those are monumentous decisions by one board or the other to take, uh, capital improvement that's very serious and say, we'll slip it for one year. And, uh, therefore, this is your time for the other board to move ahead.
Right, but sometimes, you know, I, maybe I stand alone on this one, but I, I think we need.
It's, it's, it's difficult to, to put in practice.
Well, the budget committee does it every time. I mean, the budget, I mean, that's their job is to, is to recommend or not recommend, and, and CIP does it for, for planning purposes. But, you know, the fact of the matter is that if we're trying to incrementally make sure that our facilities and our capital, uh, needs are met, we probably do have to kinda take turns and, and recognize that we all can't have everything that we want all in the same year. And I, and I think if we do that, I think we're just gonna, we're gonna get the same result. So, the lesson that I learned from last year was that there was way too much on, on, on the ballot, and it was, you know, people picked and chose and nothing passed, so we can do the same thing. I mean, we can certainly put everything up again, and we could, we, we are very likely to see the same result. Or we can try to have dialogue with the school, school district and to come to some sort of, uh, consensus or agreement as to, you know, how to proceed. I don't think it could hurt. Am I alone on that, or I, I, if we're gonna do this, I think we need to do it in relatively short order. I mean, we're gonna be talking about budgets come September and October. And if, and if we're, and my, my point is this, is that I have personally been through every school in this district, and I've been through all of our buildings on the town side. I highly doubt that all of the nine school board members have gone through all of our town facilities. Some of you may or may not have been through all of the school facilities, so, but yet, we're the ones, you know, we are the fourteen, you know, individuals that are responsible for a collective fifty-five million dollars of spending. Maybe it's time that we at least have that type of discussion.
In due course, especially as we're getting closer to the budget. We need to, um, we'll proceed in a way of trying to find how to implement that.
I, I'm gonna push the envelope.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure you have some ideas along that line, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Do we need to work it tonight?
I'm gonna push the envelope on it, is, and that is, I think we can start with having Sue and Stacy get together and at least talk about what, because an informed superintendent of schools and an informed town administrator who understand the needs of each other's entities is the first start. Um, because many of the school board members get their cues or their lead from the superintendent of schools. And I think if Sue was able to articulate, here's what the towns need, here's what the concerns of the selectmen are, and, and the superintendent of schools can, can do the same with Sue, as what the schools' issues or concerns are, that can start the process. But, you know, we are almost in, in August, and before you know it, school's gonna start again, and they're gonna be hot and heavy, you know, dealing with the first, you know, thirty days of school, um, and all the issues that surround it. And then we're in budget season. So, you know, this is a good time, you know, to start that, and I, and I think, you know, we do have our town administrator, the superintendent of schools, who are well positioned to start those, that dialogue.
But the CIP submissions have already gone forward.
But it's not, CIP is a planning issue. I'm talking more of a bud- this is a budgeting issue.
Okay.
Because ultimately, it's what gets on the warrant article, I think, but.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
How is Sue supposed to have an intelligent conversation if we don't even know any priorities of what's coming? This board hasn't even looked at CIP and made any types of priorities as to where we are. How's Sue supposed to go forward with a con- with an intelligent conversation?
I think Sue has seen CIP. I think Sue understands the fact that we need financial software. She knows about the fire stations, she knows about what our, what our capital needs are, she knows about our road programs, she know.
Yeah, what I don't know is the bottom line, how much is the board comfortable in going forward with CIP and what would be the board's priorities?
And so, that's the first question Stacy's gonna ask her? Cause it all comes down to the bottom line, money. Well, how much of the, how much of the selectmen willing to see in the budget or the taxes go up? That's gonna be our question, so that I can look at mine and come up with a night, would it just have a discussion? Otherwise, how do we have a discussion?
I mean, five years ago, we had a CIP and special articles, I think they told six million last, this year, we have one point three million. It's, as you know, has been systematically decreased, and one point three million in CIP and special articles is insufficient to meet the ongoing needs of the town. That's just on the town side.
Well, we have to have those discussions. I mean, they have to occur. The sooner they occur, the better. I mean, it's incumbent upon us, it's what the people expected. They expect us to push and push and push for those types of discussions. for those types of discussions. I think that, and, and we could always find a reason not to have them or put them off until we have so much information. I think the point is to start it early, and now is not too early, that's for sure. And it's certainly not too early for, for Sue to reach out to Stacy and say, let's get together and have a preliminary discussion and ask each other what would be beneficial, as far as you're concerned, to bring to that initial discussion, how much, what's the board, you know, and that opens up the discussion, gets things flowing, and you can report back to us, she can report back to, to the school, the folks that she needs to report back to, but I think we need to do it, and we need to do it soon, we need to do it now, we need to be able to at least say to the, to the, the citizen in Goffstown, we've tried and we've tried and we've tried, uh, and, and demonstrate to them that we've gone to every length possible to try and bring these two entities together, because they're too often at odds with one another, and that shouldn't be. You know, it's the same community, we need to bring the same concerns forward and, and work together to resolve them. So I absolutely, I mean, the sooner the better, and I think Scott's suggestion of Sue meeting with Stacy, at least initially, just to open up the channels of communications is a good one, let, let's get it going.
Would you want this board to, uh, meet initially here and then ask, you know, to adjourn and reconvene at the school?
I think we-
To be an agenda item at their location?
Personally, I think we just need one, a separate standalone day, evening, et cetera, where you present what our issues are, what's been, you know, what, you know, whether it be revenues, however we, you know, we wanna package it, and so you can articulate to the school, um, district members what our issues are, and then consequently, you know, Chairman Pankost or, or somebody else will do the same with us. Here's the conditions of, you know, Bartlett School, here's what we're facing with, with our budget, here's where our revenues are going.
They're going down a road that they're, rather than, since we both meet on Monday evenings, uh,
Right, it'll be a separate day.
A separate meeting, uh, just for that one issue at some other time during the week.
Right.
That could be-
Before or after I meet with Stacy?
That could be part of your discussion with Stacy. Is, is there a convenient time?
Okay.
Cause she, she knows the general schedule of the boards, board member.
And that, and that's kinda segues me into, I, I, when I went to Parks and Rec, one of the issues was the Barnard Track. And obviously, we own Barnard Park, where we, you know, we're, we're responsible for it. However, the school uses the track for track and field. In case you don't know, there are significant cracks in the, uh, the track itself, and it's a safety hazard. They cannot have meets there. All of the Goffstown, uh, track and field meets are held, uh, at another location. They do train, um, at Barnard Park, um, but it's a safety issue. So Parks and Rec Commission is like, well, in terms of Parks and Rec for the community, does the community need an upgraded track? It's their opinion, no. The community needs a walking track. Um, one that is safe and, um, but would not warrant, you know, a demolition of this track and then rebuilding it at a tune of three hundred and worth something thousand dollars. The school district, obviously, last year put up their warrant article, which was for a track behind, uh, the high school and the fields and on their campus. But yet, there needs to be some sort of dialogue to say, okay, if that's the direction you're going, then why are we gonna spend all this money on the Barnard Track? So the, the Parks and Rec Commission is of the, is of the opinion that they need to fix this, pretty much cut out the areas where there are cracks and fix that, um, and get it all to, so all in one grade, so it's not a tripping hazard, so that's fine for people to, to walk around or to run around, but it's not gonna be anything-
For competition.
You got it. Um, and that would probably be, you know, one-fifth the price, if, if not more than that, uh, of, of kinda doing a full reclaim of that track. And for the Parks and Rec Commissioners, the community doesn't need a, you know, a tournament or a competition level, level track.
Sounds like, sounds like the town could proceed forward with that option anytime now, or where, as the budget allows, because the school is not gonna come in and totally rehabilitate the, the track to competition level, so-
Correct, but the dialogue should still be there to say, hey, we're getting the impression that, based upon what you put on the warrant article last year, but there's really not a, one would think that there might be some discussions, and maybe there, there are some between the athletic director and Rick, but it seems to be that they're all taking cues from, well, the school board hasn't had that conversation with the Board of Selectmen, so it's like, yeah, we've had some of those discussions, but that's why, that, that would be another topic of discussion, maybe for you and Stacy, it's like, what are we doing with Barnard? Because clearly, you know, there is no money to do a full, you know, revamp of that, of that track.
It's one board or the other has to make a decision. You're, you're suggesting this evening, uh, the decision would be, we acknowledge the school is not gonna totally rehabilitate the track at Barnard Field. The town, therefore, we are gonna rehabilitate it, but to a lesser degree.
Right, right, but the, the issues, and, end of, end of conversation.
Our current agreement is that they maintain the-
Maintain the track.
Right, it's in need of ends.
Right.
So do we ask for a modification on that agreement, because we have no-
Right, and that is, that is the, the issue that needs to get resolved between the school board and, and the Board of Selectmen, is that, yeah, the Parks and Rec Commissioners are saying the need is for a walking track for the community, not for a competition tournament-type track. We don't have the money, it just makes total sense. However, ultimately, it's the school that is responsible for the maintenance of it, but yet, why would the school wanna put any money into a track which they're not gonna really use?
Because they want to, are they still-
Who knows, right.
Going forward with their track behind the school?
So, wasn't that, wasn't that school built on a grant or something as well, or was, I, I don't remember the conversation?
Track, right, and that's something we, that, there are, they don't have, Rick doesn't know where all the records are for that. So if we could somehow scour our records here at Town Hall-
Records for what?
For the, for the land and the bill-
Both? Both, oh.
Because there was this whole notion that we can't do anything with the pools, because they were federal funds, and, and, and they wanna kinda wrap that thing up, um, as to what can and cannot be done.
And I know at one of the meetings that I had attended with Parks and Rec, it was the commission's wish to kinda get together with the school board, the selectmen, get all the groups together and try to come up with a, a common denominator so that we could get that track underway.
Same thing, right, it's, it's, it's still there. I'm saying, rather than keep revisiting this year-
We need to, we need to act on it right now.
Right, and, and the other issue that came up in that, in that, in that meeting was, you know, this whole issue of the federal funds to, for Barnard Park and for the pool, et cetera, because if you recall, a year or two ago, when we renovated the pools, and, uh, the two of you, I don't think were here at the time, but it was, uh, there was some discussion, should it be for residents only or not? And then that the, the, and if you weren't a resident, you would pay a fee or something, and then the discussion, well, we cannot do that, because we took federal funds and had to be open to everybody. But yet, no one has any documentation to, to support that, so, or at least no one's seen it. So maybe Dave French has it, or who knows, but we definitely need to get any paperwork possible on this, because it's something that future, uh, Parks and Rec Commissioners are gonna need.
How many years ago was that?
It's in the seventies, was it not? The track was in the eighties.
The track wasn't federal money, it was donated.
That was donations, right, so-
John Brown.
Correct, but I don't know, the pool, I think Dave French said, I thi, I think it was the seventies.
But let's, let's stay focused on the track.
Yeah.
We've had an extended discussion on Fire Station Improvement Committee and down several rabbit trails off of that. Let's move on to the Finance Software Committee, and I attended that July seventeenth. The primary activities there is, we, the, the staff prior to the meeting had reviewed requests for informations, documents that had been provided to the town. There were three responses from, uh, three firms responded to requests for information about finance software. The information provided in those, from those three firms essentially then led the staff and also the committee to be comfortable moving ahead to a request for proposal or software. And the, uh, motion was made by the committee to recommend that this board, uh, allow the committee to start drafting an RFP to, for the purpose of purchasing that software. And the results of that RFP would be available in the budget deliberation timeframe, so that there could be a firm number as part of the, the budget deliberation as to the cost to implement the software. And this is all predicated on an implementation date. If you wish to have new software go live in January of twenty fourteen, then the purchase would be in, with the March ballot in twenty thirteen.
So is it safe to say the committee came to the same conclusion as we did last year to go forward with vendors?
Committees of, is of a conclusion that this town is, has an unacceptable risk of letting the existing software system continue to function.
So Sue's correct.
Yes, the committee endorsed what we had known last year, have done it independently.
Okay.
And they have requested, uh, you know, they, they did a request for information as to what is available in the, in the world of comm, in some minstrel software, uh, packages for finance activities. Got back quite a few documents from three different firms, some more comprehensive than others, but that essentially made the staff and the committee smarter as to what should we be asking for in a request for proposal for an actual bid for the software.
So that's what they're seeking from the board tonight, is authorization to prepare an RFP?
And they would like this board to endorse their recommendation to, that the board should go ahead and release, uh, or present back to this board a full-blown RFP, which we would then approve for release. All of which, what I've tried to explain is in a two-page document that you had as a read-ahead.
And when do they wanna go forward with this, ASAP?
The, yes, uh, I'm, I'm, a couple key dates here. Prepare the RFP would commence here at the end of July. The draft of that RFP would be available in mid-August, and it would be presented to the Board of Selectmen mid-August. Actually, on the time scale, it's fourteen August.
Do they need a motion or just an approval?
They need a, at, they need, at this evening, they need an approval to spend their, to have the staff spend their time writing the RFP, having it reviewed by the committee, and then the committee would endorse it to this board for its release. And the release would be mid-August, or excuse me, um, okay, I'm reading it clearer here. The RFP would then be, uh, sent out at the beginning of September. Bids would come back in in thirty days, the committee would re, review the bids, would make a recommendation back to this board as to which bid, uh, was most comprehensive and the cost of that bid. And the committee would then use that information to help prepare the twenty thirteen budget, which would be in November. You would have a, a hard number to do that with, rather than last year, we, we just pulled a, a number out of the air that we felt would cover the majority of the actions. Scott?
There's a couple of things that I took, took away from these two pages of minutes, was that, one, it was a six-zero vote to proceed with an RFP, um, and the timeline, I also took a lot from that, because it's, it's, first of all, this group is probably one of the more talented ad hoc committees we put together, in my opinion, very, they're really on, on point with things. But what, what kind of got me, and it, and I know that our, our software is, could, could fail at any time, and I, and I, and I think that's probably the reason why there was a six-zero vote. But when you look at the last, second to last bullet, where the go-live date is January one, two thousand fourteen, so, you know, we're still like, you know, a year and four or five months away from the go-live date, and this thing could die at any point. So it is like mission critical that we get these RFPs, mission critical that we communicate to the public how important it is to, uh, to fund this, and it's, and it's, and it's almost an intangible. You know, people don't see, you know, finance software, it's not, you know, they don't see it as a, as a fire truck, or a police cruiser, or a dump truck or something, it's something, but it's the lifeblood of how we function here at Town Hall, how we process all of our financials. And, um, we've gotta get that, gotta get that message out, and I think that's an article, so. I'm gonna write it. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Write.
Or you wanna write it?
You, you-
For the newspaper article?
Yeah, a newspaper article.
You're good with it.
I'm okay, you're okay with that?
I'm comfortable with it.
Well, are we gonna authorize, are we gonna do this formally with a motion? I don't think we need a motion, but, I mean, authorize them, I don't have a problem with them.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we authorize the ad hoc committee to proceed with, um, submitting formal RFPs as soon as possible for-
They have to submit it to us, for our pro-final pool.
Right. For the purpose of, uh, obtaining financial software.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion of the need for this software and for the motion?
Okay, the motion is to send out the RFPs.
To get one, to get one here. The development and bringing it back on.
And it would be, according to their time schedule, uh, it would be brought to the board on the twentieth of August.
Yeah, okay, I think it needs a motion, but fine.
Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Next committee is Library Trustees. I did not attend, but they did meet on the nineteenth of July. They accepted, accepted some donations, and they're still preparing a budget for twenty thirteen. They accepted a letter of resignation from one staff member. That's it. Parks and Rec Commission.
Basically, we talked about that, the Barnard, uh, issue, also talked about the pools. Pools are getting very, very heavy use, which is great. Uh, we know we've invested money into, uh, refurbishing, refurbishing the pools. Um, in case you didn't know, we got a very generous donation from Evelyn Miller. That's for shade structures, and those are go, hopefully gonna be installed shortly. The shade structures themselves, I mean, the, the steel, I mean, they're-
That was a motion, uh, we accepted that donation, this board.
Hopefully, the installation's gonna, is gonna occur soon, that the, you know, Rick showed me the, the steel structures, I mean, and some of them weigh like two hundred and fifty to four hundred pounds, these things, they're, and, and that they're, it'd be a very nice addition. They are, um, having some issues with leaks in the skimmer lines, which has been ongoing. And typically, what happens is they bring the pool company out, detect where the leak is, they break open the, the decking, they make the repair, but it seems like every year, we keep doing them and doing them and doing them, and that, the pool being thirty-plus years old, uh, I believe that as part of, uh, the budget this year, the, uh, Parks and Rec Commission and Rick are gonna submit, uh, uh, a per, and as part of the budget to replace these lines, um, and they're looking at different ways of, of, of doing that. One might be, um, if, if it's possible, to use DPW resources to do the, um, breaking up of the concrete deck and removing the, you know, the, the soil, and then having pool company or the plumber, you know, do the lines, and then we would then backfill and then take care of the concrete ourselves, um, and, and obviously, using just totally- then take care of the concrete ourselves. Um, and, and obviously using just totally outside contractors for that endeavor. They're also looking at the possibility of, um, if you recall, a couple of years ago, when they, they did that, uh, was it, uh, horizontal?
Drilling.
Drilling or boring? Seeing if, if that's a possibility where they can maybe close one skimmer line and then create another one and do a horizontal bore. I don't know. I, I, that's, that's above my pay grade. I don't, I don't know too much about that. But they are looking at those different options. But that is, it is a problem where they have to, you know, continually put in, you know, add water because there's, there's, there's definitely leaks, so.
So, same type of drilling, similar to what they use for horizontal drilling for fracturing?
Okay.
We solved, last year, we solved some of the leaks because of the liners put on the pool.
Right.
And that was a, not only water leaking, but, uh, they were dangerous because of the concrete part of the pool was abrasive. But the piping is still leaking.
Right. But, you know, on the positive side, I mean, they're getting great use. Uh, summer, the summer camp has been, um, full, you know, for all the openings. Um, so it's been a, it's been, it's been going very, very well. People are taking good, they, they're using our parks, which is, that's what they're there for.
Good news. Thank you for the report on the Park and Rec Commission. Last one is our CIP. Mark?
Yeah, CIP. Did I make that one?
They canceled that one, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we canceled that one. Yeah, that's the, that's, I'm sorry. That's the one coming, that's the one coming up next week.
Yeah. Good report. That's a good report.
Say, I didn't, I don't think I missed that one. It's coming up, coming up.
Well, we do have on our agenda a, a second public comment and there was no member of the public here for me to offer that opportunity to. Uh, last item, uh, that's the last for the public discussion. Uh, do.
The only thing I, I wanted to make the board aware of is you had authorized going forward with that RFP for VRV system for Town Hall. And we were hopeful that we would get bids at least to do the upstairs with that new technology.
We're talking about the, the heating, cooling of the building now.
Heating and cooling, yes. And, uh, we did go out. We got two, uh, responsive bidders and the cost are way over budget. So, it doesn't look like that technology is feasible within budget and we have to do something. So, just wanted you to be aware that Dave is now specing out replacing in kind. Of course, um, it's not really in kind because a new refrigerant is needed to meet new guidelines. So, he is looking at that. The other thing that, um, the proposals came, proposals, the bidders came to a, um, pre-proposal meeting and they indicated that you could probably get to the same efficiency by insulating the walls. Um, this sheetrock is on strapping and then it's your brick and cement. So, there is no insulation between the walls. They thought that you could see better efficiency by insulating rather than going with that new technology. That would be additional savings. Just something to think of when we do the redesign of Town Hall upstairs.
Thank you, Sue.
But we'll come back to you. It's a work in progress.
Any remaining items to discuss in our public session? Do I hear a motion concerning non-public and?
Voting for volunteer nomination?
Yeah.
C. Yes.
Diversely affect the.
So, Phil, you making the motion?
I'll make it.
I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion for the non-public.
No second, sorry.
That's a ninety-one, A, three, two, uh, two, that'll be Roman numeral, I'm sorry, it'll be letter C, right?
C, yeah.
Rochar Walt on that motion, please?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Then we will return to non-public when we come back into session for public. I don't expect any further discussion.